Seven o'clock, we have a quorum. We'll call the planning board meeting to order. First up for general information, is it Joe Chang?
Really?
You're the first on the list?
I don't know why I'm on the list.
Oh, okay. You don't have--
Did you sign in paper?
Oh, I thought you meant you had to sign in to attend.
Oh, no, this is-- Oh, this is-- This is if you have something to question or anything.
No, I came to see there if you--
Oh, okay, that's fine. David Tran?
Right there. Um, who would want me to stand?
Whatever, yes.
Um, so, I'm from Tranbrook Blue Market. Uh--
Yeah, probably because there's been some trouble with the mics. When he speaks, does he-- Should he speak into the microphone?
That's a great spot. There's a good spot here.
Yeah.
So, I'm from Tranbrook Blue Market. My father's Johnny Tran and my mother's Diane Nguyen. Just recently, like, they both were getting sick and we just had-- the building inspector-- I can't remember his name now.
Didn't matter.
Yeah, yeah. He came through and we had U-Haul for a short period of time. We stopped doing the U-Haul and I actually came here to formally apologize for doing that. We didn't know, we had to go through the board. About that, U-Haul said we were all set. We're taken care of and, like, we had other businesses in Hadley that does U-Haul. They said we're taken care of. So, actually, I just came here just to formally apologize, saying we didn't know. And I hope this was just a little incident that we didn't--
Are they gone?
They're gone.
Thank--
The vehicles are still there, they're just finishing up--
Okay.
--crowding them off from us. But we're done. I would like to do future jobs in front-- or within the property, because there is a lot of space that I'm not using. But I just want to come here and take care of that issue first.
Well, thank you for coming here and thank you for taking care of it.
So, thank you.
I'm no foul.
I want to say that he's got the best mangoes in town.
He's the only one?
Better than-- Mr. Parrmark.
Yeah. Uh-- Yeah. Uh-- Let's show Parrmark for Hampton Inn. We're planning to replace our concrete pad and put a compactor where the current dumpster and concrete pad is and just wondering if there's anything required by us.
Is it going to be fenced in and stuff like that and hidden from view?
Yes.
Just like the existing one?
Correct.
Yeah, that's-- I don't see a problem with that.
So, when you say "replace," you mean you're just-- this is like--
For the pad--
Upkeep?
Yeah, for the pad, the current concrete pad is cracking and it's basically-- so we're going to dig it up, replace it with the same footprint pad and put a compactor there.
Is the compactor the same size?
It's larger.
How much larger?
About-- I think about 15 feet compared to--
What's the yardage of the one you got and what's the one-- the yardage you're getting?
Uh, the compactor's probably around 30 yards and the one we have right now is probably 10 yards.
Larger?
Yes, larger.
So, it's a 40-yarder?
Yes.
Yes, because it's in basically the same concrete pad and enclosed.
Correct.
Okay. So, the footprint that you're putting down will be no larger than what you have today?
The concrete footprint will be larger than the one we have. It'll be the same size.
Be the same size?
Correct.
But the compactor will be bigger, but it'll fit inside the enclosure, so it'll be just the plate?
Yes, the enclosure will be a little bit longer due to the--
Okay.
I would say that's maintenance and it doesn't require any action.
I agree.
Business, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, okay. That was easy. It's not 7:15 yet, right? That was too easy, 7:04. Ah, what do we got?
We got a few odds in it. We can go to the back of the agenda.
Okay.
So, let's see. Just as a comment, if anyone is here for EverSource, they have been continued to July 18th. We did get a memorandum, originally from David Dixon at the end of May. This one was circulated by the treasurer today. Just as a reminder, they are trying to really get tight with deadlines for the end of the fiscal year. So--
Well, I got to find out.
All FY '17 revenues into the town clerk no later than June 30th at noon. The last warrant is for-- will be signed July 19th. I did-- invoices must be submitted to the accountant by 11:00 a.m. on that day and no encumbrances are allowed without basically--
Invoice?
Uh, invoices and anything over 200 has to be discussed.
The-- Go ahead.
I did send-- forwarded this to you. It just came in today. So, I forwarded it to you and I forwarded it to Larry at Pioneer Valley Planning Commission because we will only have one more meeting. We have a meeting on the 18th of July.
Right.
We're not meeting on the 4th of July. So, I told him that unless he had-- unless there was something in the mail today, that he had to get everything to us by that meeting so that we could take care of it.
Now, the 7,600 we got transferred for the scanner. That had-- that's this fiscal year, is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
So, we got to do something with that.
So, we probably do have to encumber that, but--
You got an invoice for that?
No, I haven't bought it yet. I just got notified. I was talking to Tim, I'm going to go see Tim tomorrow about what he needs and what he would like so that we can make sure we get the right stuff. I mean, that's pretty much, I believe, almost an off-the-shelf item.
Yeah, but I mean, if you-- you-- they're asking for an invoice, aren't they bill for that?
Yeah, yes, yeah.
Right?
So-- Right.
And I want to bring up this thing about unpaid taxes. If we could set a policy about that, like stopping to sue the collector. Because there's two permits that we gave out that was probably $30,000, $40,000 in taxes owed--
Oh, really?
Yeah.
So, I read the policy, the initial policy that came out, which called for us to notify all the other boards every time someone comes in for anything. And I wrote back and said, "That just doesn't work the way we do business because what we approve administratively, we approve on the spot, like the pad." And, you know, we can't-- the zoning act, Chapter 40A, doesn't give us authority to delay things--
But in--
--to notify-- it doesn't matter, 40A-- we're governed by the state zoning law and we have to act within certain times. And if we get slow information back, we can't hold up a special permit or a site plan approval because we haven't heard back.
No, can-- can-- not-- you don't have to hold it back. It's contingent on they pay their levies or taxes or whatever they have.
Yeah, we can always put a-- we certainly can put a clause in saying that issuance of the building permit is conditioned on-- satisfying the building inspector that you are current.
Right.
But the original version that came out wanted us to notify the collector, the treasurer, maybe a couple of-- Board of Health of everything that comes before us. And that's just not feasible.
Right, because there's a big list.
How would we know?
Well--
Well, we know, we got an agenda.
What they're-- Yeah, what they're telling-- except that we have so much that comes in that's off the agenda that-- but what they're saying is they want us to tell them who's coming in so they can check it against their list. Now, Sue used to send the list around of who was in arrears.
Yeah, depends on what part of the year that is. That could be a big number or a small number. The later in the year, the smaller number.
But as long as, you know-- it would be fine for us to check against the list, but--
Why can't we use the language contingent upon-- this permit is valid contingent upon that the--
Well, it won't do much-- much good because we're just passing the buck to the building inspector. Will he check?
Well, on the little-- on the little things that we approve administratively, Bill's right, it doesn't work.
You're right.
But as far as anything that we have a public hearing for--
Right.
Um, I haven't been putting notices in the treasurer and the accountant's mailbox, but I could put-- I can easily put those in their mailbox, therefore, they're notified. We're holding a public hearing on this-- for lack of a better word, account.
That's reasonable.
And it would be up to them to let us know that, hey, they're behind or they're or they're not. Well, not so much they're not, but they're behind. They owe us money for whatever.
What Sue said, the last meeting, we issued two permits and there was probably $30,000 or better owed the town. And one of them, we had to go in front of the flock for a liquor license and the owner of the property ran right down and paid $4,000 in real estate tax.
Okay.
You know, I mean, if they owe the town money like that. Or you can grant it if contingent on they make an agreement with the town.
Right.
So, sometimes people have a hard time--
No, Jim's suggestion is a good one. You're going to get the--
Well--
--the big problems.
We do both. We put the notice on the appropriate-- all the mailbox that we're having this public hearing and Bill put something in there that the building inspector-- the building permit is contingent upon ensuring that they're up to date on their taxes and fees or whatever it is.
Yeah, or-- or a bona fide agreement.
Right, okay, yeah, something like that.
So, actually, what you send out to the legal notice, you send to the newspaper.
Correct.
If we just-- if you just add the collector and the treasurer to that--
Oh, yeah, I make a copy. Every legal notice I put into the court, I mean, the paper that I read here, I can use it right here. This-- where is it? This legal-- this notice right here goes into-- it goes into the mailbox in Town Hall. I can simply add treasurer and accountant and the others to this-- to that distribution. That's not a--
Or you just-- you don't even have to copy it, just add it to the email because the--
Oh, I see. Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, when you're emailing the Gazette and the town clerk--
And just add them--
Just add the--
Add them to that. That's true, too.
Along those same lines, do-- does the Board of Health have to issue a permit before a new restaurant can open in town?
Before it does, of course, it has to happen.
Yeah, they inspect--
I'm just-- I thought they did, but I wanted to make sure this is what--
Yeah, they--
They can't open--
So, if the original site plan approval is being violated and a new restaurant is being proposed for a site, could we use the Board of Health as leverage to get the site plan approval back in compliance? And you guys may know what I'm talking-- what I'm thinking about.
But that's in their ballpark now.
Uh, we don't have-- we have to--
It's not a jurisdiction.
Only the building inspector's zoning enforcement officer can enforce zoning violations. But we can write him a letter.
But my question is, could another board use certain leverage to force compliance?
I would really not want to go down that path.
It would have to be the zoning-- it would have to be the building inspector acting as a zoning enforcement officer to do that.
Yeah.
You start-- it would be like us saying you're out of complaints for these things on the Board of Health.
Well, we're using the treasurer as leverage now to pay the taxes or whatever, so I think we've already--
No, the treasurer's using us as leverage, yeah.
But it's a two-way street, isn't it?
Uh--
This is something to think about. I don't even answer, but you know which site I'm talking about, probably.
You see, I don't-- I certainly don't want to get involved in the jurisdiction of the Board of Health or any other board.
Yeah.
You know, you could just start a big--
Couldn't-- couldn't we just write him a letter and saying, "Before you-- as you issue this permit, please be advised that the owner of this property is out of violation."
But they can't do anything about it, that's the problem.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I wouldn't want to--
Okay.
The building inspector's the enforcement officer.
Well--
Anything else, Bill? Uh, let's see, what else did I have? EverSource is--
It's not working.
Oh, I just wanted to mention that in connection with the scanner purchase, John from the back of the room has offered to consult in getting the new scanner set up. So, just wanted to thank him for his making the offer. Thank you.
Speech. What are you going to say?
Um, let me just say--
That's enough.
Should I come up there? No, um-- Yeah, it's a great machine. You guys are going to-- I haven't seen a stack of plans, any plans to digitize yet, but I'm sure I could offer some input as far as getting it up and running--
Okay.
--you know, with the software. So, I'm familiar with all those kinds of software--
Okay.
--that deal with those large format printers or scanners.
Okay.
So, I mean, if you got somebody in mind, I understand that, too, but I just--
We-- the only-- we have-- the only people we have in mind is the building inspector to get his input on what we want to purchase. Beyond purchasing it, setting it up, we welcome you--
So, you're going to have to get a computer as well as the scanner to go along with it or it's going to operate on one of your existing computers?
We-- we're not sure yet.
Not sure yet.
Yeah, we want to see what the scanner costs. I wanted to get a laptop that we could connect to it. If not, we'll just use one of our own laptops and put it into a disk of some sort or a portable hard drive to store the information.
Super.
So, what I will do is I will get you your emails exchanged so that you can work directly on--
Okay, all right.
--on that level.
You're the purchasing guy?
I am.
Okay.
Yes.
He's the main guy here.
Yeah. Appreciate--
I'm happy to help.
Appreciate your offer, thank you.
Okay.
All right, it's 7:15. The Hadley Planning Board will conduct public hearings on Tuesday, June 20, 2017, beginning at 7:15 p.m. in the Hadley Senior Center Meeting Room. Purpose of the first hearing is to review the application of Parrmark Company for special permit, site plan approval, to construct a new 7,000-square-foot building at the Hadley Village Barn Shops on Russell Street. The second hearing is to review the application of Amherst Apartments for special permits, site plan approval, erosion, and control to construct a 40,000-square-foot lot-- parking lot-- 40,000-square-foot parking lot on Russell Street approximately behind the former Sunoco gas station. Said parking area is for a new apartment complex that will be located in Amherst, but its parking will be in Hadley. The application and plans may be viewed in the town clerk's office during normal business hours, published twice in the Gazette, June 5 and 12. Mr. Darnold?
Um, I don't know whose tripod is just, but I'm using it.
Sorry, we'll charge you a certain fee for YouTube.
This is a Hadley Village Barn Shop location and it's quite a lot. We're proposing-- this is starting up low.
We understand you don't do this very often.
Uh, yeah. One thing I wanted to-- This was the Hadley Village Barn site back a while ago before the building was demolished. And this was the thing we were considering, existing conditions for the site for purposes of drainage and traffic scenario. Basically, the meeting house has been constructed and these buildings have been demolished and torn down. And the proposal is to construct a new building in this location. This is Russell Street, this is the main driveway coming in, and this would be the new building in this location. As far as the area pavement, it's been slightly decreased from what was previously there, so the drainage has not been altered, been slightly improved. This is within the 100-year floodplain and we've constructed the building such that there's no net loss in flood storage, actually excavating a little area up to the north here to compensate for temporary flood storage. The building meets all step-back requirements for side yard, front yard scenario. It has ADA access, the parking ratios-- we approved all the parking ratios, so we comply with the parking ratios for the entire parcel as well as open space. We calculate the entire open space for the entire parcel. So, as far as that goes, the project completely complies with all the zoning requirements and bylaws according to site criteria and site constraints. And this is a rendering of the proposed building. This is standing in the parking lot, looking at this would be Route 9 on this side here. It's slightly different-- this rendering is slightly different than what we have actually submitted. We do have a handicap ramp in the front of the building on the final plan, which we will give to the board tonight. And that is really a really quick summary.
When you say "front," that's actually the side facing the parking lot?
This is the side, this is Route 9 side here.
Okay.
And this is facing the parking lot.
That's the main entrance to side?
The main entrance is the side here.
So, the ramp is going to be off the parking lot?
Correct, just to clarify here. This is the entrance from Route 9. This is the side entrance here and then up there. And then the main entrance would be this location. So, in the parking lot, you would enter it here and we have a ramp coming up here. So, slightly different than what the plan would do. That's the only little difference. In doing that, we had to adjust the parking aisles a little bit, but that's basically it.
So, where's the Latino market on that? Is it--
Pardon?
The Latino market?
That's 20 plus--
It's on the-- it's on the Russell Street side. It's not even--
Yeah. It's over here, yeah. It's over--
It's on the other side.
But it's on the same--
It's over there.
Yeah, but that's on that parcel, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
It's a very large parcel, includes the-- and then the-- the energy center. To play off this all that.
So, is this-- is this the beginning of just one building or you got additional buildings planned for this parcel? It seems like you--
Right now, this is the only building we have planned.
Yeah. How many additional buildings could you fit into the parcel? I'm just curious.
Right now, I mean, we're-- if we have to do, we have to knock down some of it.
We're pretty well maxed out as far as parking areas and open space.
But that's actually less than what was there originally, right?
As far as pavement and building, yes.
The--
Well, actually, the building's a little bit larger and, I mean, with the impervious surfaces are a little bit less and so we're sort of taking some of the pavement, turning it into building, which is actually good from a drainage perspective because root drainage is cleaner than paper drainage.
The-- all the-- all the buildings on site are leased or nothing is condoed or anything like that, is that correct?
I'll have to ask the--
No.
Okay.
What's on that westerly border? What's there? Is there a fence in there? There's greenery there, what is there?
Here?
Yeah.
That's the-- I can name it, that's the office building.
Hoffman's, two medical buildings.
And what's in between there, nothing?
It's pretty open there, yes.
Just open?
This is the back of the-- these are like office buildings here or is the back of the building?
But that's more to the front of the building, ain't it? Where's that-- where's his buildings?
His buildings are a little bit south of that.
There's an outline of them on there.
Yeah. Doesn't really show too well, this is the same location. This is the entire parcel. This is a wood frame structure here. This is a parking lot-- basement parking lot here.
So, it's south of this-- or his building's south of this proposed building?
His-- his building's proposing to go right here.
Uh-huh.
And this is the office building. Two office building chairs.
Kind of like southwest of it, a little bit.
Yeah, so the office buildings are down there.
Yeah, they're-- there's the building chair.
Okay.
And that's open up to the front, that's--
This is the open driveway coming--
In a parking area up there.
And the parking lot on the side here.
Is there any windows on the-- on the west side of that building?
On the backside, I don't--
You have any elevations of--
There are windows, but they're covered. Come on, the proposed building?
Yeah.
Um, I'll let the architect go.
What is that? What is that thing up in the middle of that building?
I knew you could ask that.
No, I just--
That's a--
That's a sugar shack or what is that?
I'm going to turn the building on the-- on the outside.
Makes the maple syrup.
If you're in the building, I'll turn it over.
Okay.
How that look like?
Um, that was the original conceptual rendering from a few months ago. So, this would be the parking lot view here with the ramp coming up the side, the main entrance, a door over the entrance. This is a cupola up here. And we've broken up the facade a bit by adding a water table around the base that comes-- it also covers the insulation as it comes up to cover the foundation, which is kind of pulled up because we need to keep the building above the floodplain. And this would be the western elevation, which would be the one you were asking about. So, it has three large windows. They're blacked out behind, so it's just the false window, so we have--
Why is that cupola-- it doesn't even look proportionate to that building. It's so shallow, why?
Um--
Doesn't even look like a cupola. It looks something-- reminds me of a sugar shack where they're boiling sugar shack.
Yeah, well--
Maple syrup.
We had done a kind of a survey of other Connecticut River Valley cupolas and this is something that we found--
I haven't seen one on Route 9 like that.
There may not be one on Route 9.
No, there-- there are cupolas that were used--
Yeah. That-- that-- you're calling that a cupola?
That ain't a cupola.
Well, it breaks up the roof line, which I think is all what the requirement is.
I mean, there's a variety of cupolas. Some are much larger, more ornate, some have, you know, curved roofs, some are little smokestacks sprinkled across the ridge, so--
I don't like that.
What if we put a weather vane on top of it?
Oh, I-- yeah, I kind of agree with you, John. You've got to make it more of a traditional-looking cupola, so--
Well, right, because, I mean, that-- you got nice colonial buildings in there and that thing doesn't look good, yeah.
Is this gone before the historical commission yet?
No, it's-- next week.
Next week, we're--
Next week.
--in probably commission.
Okay.
And we're also have not filed with the conservation committee, we are in floodplain.
Oh, okay, that was my next--
Yeah, so we are filing the-- we had cleaned up some of the previous permits from the prepared compliance, so we're filing with the conservation commission as well.
What's-- what's the elevation for the FEMA regulations at this site?
129.
129?
125.
125.
That's-- seems more reasonable, yeah. 125 and so--
The floor is above 125.
What's the-- what's the parking lot right in front of it?
Yeah, about 124.
Okay.
So, that's why-- the whole area there is right at 124, 125. That's why we're able to scoop a little bit out on the north side to compensate for the building.
Yeah, okay.
The whole-- whole structure finished full of the floodplain.
The color of that is what you're showing?
Yellow.
The color of--
Yeah, I have material samples here, so the base will be a darker color, like this color here.
What is that, a cement board or something?
Yeah, it's a hardy panel cement board. Chiplap, insulated chiplap. And then the trim will be this color, this gray. And then the upper portion will be this color.
Upper portion meaning?
Um, both the shingles up here and the--
Okay.
--collar bits here.
So, it won't be the yellow that's shown on the drawing?
Correct.
Why did they paint that yellow?
That was an early schematic.
Were you trying to fool us?
Of course not.
Oh, good. Thought you were. But I don't like that cupola, so you don't know.
I understand that.
Okay.
Hope you make notes of that.
So, are there-- are there guidelines for the cupola form?
No. No, we do not have anything that--
I'm trying to be formal.
--that formal, but just-- you know, some-- typically when somebody comes in for a cupola, we've seen stuff like on top of the medical building in Hadley, the Florence Savings Bank, climbing gym, stuff like that.
Sure, yeah, I'm familiar with those.
You know, more of a--
Right.
More of a raised type-- I mean, more-- I want to call it more of a contemporary cupola, okay, as opposed to what you're--
You don't have to put a weather vane with a rooster on it, you can leave that.
Staples gave John Devine a clock in the cupola, but--
Yeah.
Yeah. Don't have to get that elaborate. Uh, signage, so you-- I see obviously there's a sign on the building.
Yeah, sign on the wall here. It ends up at 58 square feet forward for that main sign and then the entrance.
Just one sign on those-- facing the parking lot?
I believe there's one-- there's a sign at the street.
Well, at the street, yeah, there's a like a little--
Aren't they allowed two?
No, they're allowed-- they're allowed up to four totaling 64 square feet. So, would they put--
We could have one on the Route 9 side and then one with a small sign on the main.
Yeah.
You're going to put a sign on the Route 9?
Well--
On the building.
So, in this-- in this application, there is one sign allowed for the property, which is-- has everybody's name on it.
Put a building sign.
He can have a building sign, but he-- but they can't have a separate street sign.
No, they can put two building signs.
Yeah, yes.
They can't exceed 64 square feet.
In total, correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so-- because I'm just wondering, being that you're facing Route 9, I would think they would want something on the street facing Route 9 as opposed to just the one facing the parking lot. But that's just--
Well, he said he wants that.
I think the one on the street is probably more prominent because of the proximity to the property line--
Correct.
--to the west, up there are bushes and--
Yep.
--a new building there, so.
But that basically, as long as you don't exceed what's allowed, how you decide to use what you are allowed is up to you.
So, on the Hadley Village Barn sign, they're going to get a small low-- one--
One strip.
One strip sign, right, okay. Okay.
Lighting.
We're not proposing to alter any of the parking lot lighting, I don't know if we have any--
We're not extending any light on the parking lot.
Building lights?
Building lights?
Yeah, we have a few lights in the soffit plan for this facade. Yeah, um, we have a few lights in the soffit plan for this facade. Um, and over here by the exit, we have an exit sign, or exit light, excuse me.
What's, is there any lights, do you want to light up those signs on a building?
Yeah, it'll come out of the soffit here.
Mm-hmm.
In the underside of the soffit.
And it shines back down on the...
Onto the facade, yeah, wall washer, we call it.
Mm-hmm. I have no problem with that project, but the cupola, that's the only hangup I got. Without the right cupola, forget it, okay? Waxman?
Yeah.
I, I get it.
That's easy.
That seems, that, that seems, that seems to be kind of the consensus of the board, that, uh, everything is fine but the cupola.
Actually, wouldn't mind if you used the design like that, but if you're trying to emulate a sugar shack cupola, they're bigger.
Right.
So, um...
It looks like a tobacco bar and bit.
He's, he's gonna change, he's gonna change it, right?
So when you, when you do come back, you're gonna have the...
Yeah, when, when you go to the historical commission, I would suggest you have an alternate design for cupola. If you want to show that one, say, we could also do this one, because if you go there with that, they may not appreciate it much more than us.
Okay.
And, um, that way, if you go to them with, you know, a couple of ideas, options, I'm not sure what you want to call them, and say, you know, well, this is what we originally planned, but these are some other possibilities, and give them some ideas, leave it at that.
Okay.
You can negotiate as you desire with them, and then come back to us once they give us, give us on the rest of the stuff, and I think you pretty much all said it, just for the cupola.
Okay.
Okay? So we'll continue to the third Tuesday of July, so if you go to see them next week, you come, because the Fourth of July is a Tuesday, and first Tuesday, so come back in a month, and we'll take five minutes, and you'll be all set.
Will you, will you set a date for them?
Uh, that would be...
Seven eighteen.
Seven eighteen. Would you explain to people in the audience that this is in the historical district, and this is why we're concerned with the look? Well, yeah, this, this...
Village Center overlay.
Village Center overlay district, it has a little bit set of unique, uh, different standards for architectural appearance. Um, you know, windows with the mullions in them, uh, horizontal sliding, shingle style roof, and they meet all of that. And a roof that has over seventy-five feet of uninterrupted ridgeline needs to be some kind of cupola break in a roof. A lot of, most people use like a cupola of some sort. And, uh, I'll go back to the foreign savings bank, and the foreign savings bank came in with their new store, where the old McDonald's used to be, and God bless John Devine, who was on the board, he says, I think that building needs a cupola.
Yeah.
And the architect says, he kind of frowned on the idea, so John was adamant, he came back to the next scheduled meeting with a cupola, and the architect says, John, you were right, that looks much better. He says, and foreign savings bank liked it too.
And you put a tractor in it?
And so that was probably when they dedicated the builder, they called that the John Devine cupola. And anyways, so, um... Excuse me, just, so, the building we're international market is its grandfather, because that's where, how it was, but if you, if he tried to bring some new businesses or change the design of the building, he would have to come back before us in the historical commission. The international, which was, which one, Johnny Tran, is that, is that over seventy-five feet?
It's a flat roof.
Yeah, uh, you would have to, well, it, that's right, that's the old arc welding that was built...
Van Arc welding?
Van Arc welding, yeah, that was years and years ago, that building was put up and converted into, I don't know how many things, between then and between the trans zoning it.
Sixty, seventy, right?
So the short answer, Mike, is the current, current structure is grandfathered.
Yes.
The current use was actually permitted.
Right.
Change of use is a trigger for site plan approval, but he doesn't have to change the building unless he does renovations that exceed something like half the value of the, half the assessed value. In that case, you have to bring it into full compliance, which is why when, uh, the Nissan dealer wanted to upgrade their, uh, operation, uh, they wanted to redesign the Nissan dealership, and we told them that, fine, you can redesign it, but you have to comply with the Village Center overlay guidelines if you exceed a certain portion of the assessed value.
I believe when the trans came in for site plan approval on that building, the Village Center overlay district was not in effect at the time as well, I believe that was that long ago, so... I figured you were sitting there to learn something, and that, you'd have to explain it better than me. Yeah, exactly.
You're gonna be so smart when you leave this meeting, you're not gonna know what to do with it.
So, uh, yeah, we'll continue to the, to the July eighteenth for, uh, for the Hadley Village Barn small building, or accessory building, um...
When are you going to the conservation commission?
We haven't filed yet, so I mean, in order...
Of you, of conservation is, yeah, but that, typically, we make, that's not gonna really affect our decision, you're going to historical next week?
Correct.
You're not triggering the erosion and sediment control?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, not, not, I think, not, it's not disturbing forty thousand square feet, it's only seven thousand square foot building.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. All right, and, good, okay. Next one is the Amherst apartment parking lot. Is that you two?
That's me two.
You two?
You got off easy on the first one, we'll watch this one, oh, boy.
That's what the parking lot's gonna look like?
Yeah.
Oh, cool.
Good, good.
Thought you off easy. Um, you know, Mark, I'm from Berkshire Design, this is for poorly, uh, North Hampton Road, and proposing to construct a parking lot, uh, right on the town line to accommodate the entire project. This is the existing condition plan, the, the parcel is the entire parcel here. The highly black line there is the portion of the property that's located within the town of Hadley. Uh, there's really not anything in there as far as construction perspective right now. There's a swimming pool, um, there's a tree line here, and this section here is all wetlands. So this is the only, I actually grasp area that we have. Just to show you exactly what the project is, we'll go into some of the minor details in a moment. This is a rendering of the project, again, with the heavy black line showing the town line. And so we're here to ask your permission or permit to essentially construct this portion of the parking lot. And again, there's, meets all the zoning requirements, there are no requirements for parking, uh, because we're not having a building on the site. We do meet open space, there are no setback requirements associated with the parking lot. We are close to the property line here, but we are proposing screening and landscaping in this location. We're proposing screening this location as well, and the entire, uh, subtly portion is all wetlands heavily wooded in the location.
What's the actual address there?
Pardon?
What is the actual address?
I think it's four oh eight North Hampton Road.
North Hampton Road.
Okay, so it doesn't have a Hadley address?
It does not have an Hadley address.
Doesn't. But the cars will be parked in Hadley, right?
The cars will be, uh, about half of the parking lot for the project is in the town of Hadley, the other half is obviously in the town of Amherst. The water is coming from Amherst, the sewer goes to Amherst, electricity as well. So again, the only, only little impact is the construction of this parking lot. Uh, just going over the drainage very quickly without getting into great round of detail. Sort of highlighted the drainage for the entire parcel. Again, the heavy black being the parcel will limits within the town of Hadley. Basically, um, southern portion, uh, southern portion, the, uh, easily portion is draining towards an underground detention system where the water will be cleaned up, released in a level that's better towards the wetlands in this location. A small portion of the site will be going to an existing culvert which goes underneath the driveway. And a significant portion of the parking lot will go to these large underground detention systems. They look, they're large, they're footprint, but the site has very poor soils, high groundwater, so these detention systems are very large footprint, but very shallow, because we need the capacity. So we're capturing the water, cleaning it, detaining it, and then again, releasing it with, which is better to control the rate of flow and velocity, so there's no erosion. So we are, you know, we went, we've been to the conservation commission on the project, then continued to July, July fifteenth, I think.
So this will add, this, this, all this water's gonna drain to the swamp that's been created by all these developments behind Stop and Shop?
Uh, it just always, this drains this way, continues to go, where it's always gone, ultimately winds up in white water, where the ultimate destination is, so...
Where's that culvert, you said that water, where's the culvert?
There's a, there's a, a, an isolated wetland, it's not a really isolated wetland, there's a depressed area with a wetland here. There's a twenty-four inch culvert which goes here, goes underneath Route nine, line Stop and Shop, and discharges air. We're taking a small amount of drainage area, and we're gonna tie it into that, again, that's all within the...
So why are you sending their drainage into Hadley?
Sending whose drainage?
Amherst.
Amherst drainage into Hadley.
Well, that's, it, it goes there now, all this drainage goes into this wetland which flows this way today. I mean, so it's...
No, but you're, you're just referring to the pipe, the twenty-four inch.
This, this drainage period is this location here, this drains this area. The rest of the site drains this way, ultimately winds up, there's a, a nice flowing stream that goes in this location.
Where's that pipe, on whose land is that pipe, is that in Amherst or Hadley?
This pipe?
Yeah.
From here to here, it's in Hadley, from here to here, it's in Amherst, I mean, I've got that backwards.
The other backwards.
Yeah, this is Amherst, that...
And who's gonna maintain that?
That's an existing pipe, that's nothing new, that's, that's there. The only thing we're doing is taking a little bit of drainage and tying it into that culvert.
Little bit, what, what is your little bit?
Uh, you want the exact, I've got the drainage cost.
Sure, I want the exact.
Well, well, Mark, usually in Hadley, that's not allowed to tie a little bit additional, but you're dealing with...
Well, you're not saying it's, it's not any additional, this drainage, everything that, every drop of water land here goes this way. Anyway, it goes to Hadley no matter what, this water goes from...
But, but that's not, that's not a municipal drainage, we wouldn't allow a tie-in to the...
Correct, I thought it was. It's not municipal?
This is on private property.
Well, then where does it go after that?
Well, I guess to here, it's going across the, uh, Domino's property, and then goes underneath Route nine, I'm not sure.
It's got, gotta go under Route nine.
Yeah, but that doesn't make it municipal.
This, this is a private, private culvert from here to here, obviously, unless there's an easement, I'm not aware of. And in, in, as far as the amount of drainage, again, we've made extreme efforts to balance the flows, to make sure the pre-impulse is equal, in addition to that, each, each one of these orange dots are, uh, cleaning scenario to make sure the water's clean. So we detain it, make sure it doesn't go any faster, and then make sure we clean it and then check the erosion factors, make sure it doesn't erode the downstream areas.
Well, this land is under one owner?
Yes.
One owner owns it?
Uh, currently, yes, it's owned by one. Current one. Yeah, again, the, the parcel comes down and includes this area here.
All the way down, that whole other one into Hadley, they own all that too, the one, that, one person?
Yes, again, the, the, the parcel is, this site is, includes that.
When, when you originally came before the board, uh, you were describing the scenario with the parking lot for the huge apartment building gonna be located in Hadley, and I emphasized the word park in parking. This looks like a sea of blacktop with very little landscaping, and doesn't look at all what I was kind of requesting and hoping for.
We are, we are, have, we have screened around the exterior, this is a planted island strip, it's not very wide, we do have...
But even if this were a parking lot in mall, we wouldn't allow that, because it has to be broken up. The, the sea of blacktop is what we don't, well, I don't like the sea, I'll speak for myself.
What's that screening on the north end, what is that, a fence, or is it approvites, or what is that?
Only for trees, closed trees.
So you, in the winter, you can see right through that?
Yes.
No, but, for example, in, in the mall, you have, uh, the parking lot is just not blacktop, a sea of blacktop, it's broken up with trees and, and islands and so on and so forth, to make it look a little bit different.
Well, it's, what, what is really the site from Route nine to that parking lot? I mean, there's two or three buildings there.
Yeah, this is the Domino's, this is the, uh, Sanoco Station. And so the, you, as you go on up Route nine, you're gonna see this building, you're not gonna see much of the parking lot, and then there will be a road.
Are you gonna have a fence around that perimeter?
Yes.
For safety for the, uh...
Yes.
Patrons?
Yes.
How high is that fence gonna be?
Six foot high, looks like a wrought iron fence, it's, it will be a gated area. There's actually a gate here that you have to have a, a, a valve on your car to actually get into it, so it will be a gated area, primarily to, you know, prevent gatherings that we're not looking forward to. Courtyard to Garrett gated as well, just to prevent un, un...
Is there any way you guys can plant a greenery on the outside of that fence? An approv, approvites, so you can't see none of that?
We're, that's what this is, this is a low, uh, a line of planting here.
What is, what is low? One foot, two foot, six foot, what is it?
I believe it's a, I don't have the planting schedule right here, but I believe it's a six foot approvites, something of that nature.
And that's gonna, that's gonna run the whole length?
From here to here, yes. And then from here to here, this is an existing wooded area, and we're planting a row of trees in this location.
Well, I should think if they put that greenery there, Joe, you're not gonna see that from, none of that from Route nine. And there is gonna be a fence around it, a fence for the safety of the patrons.
Well, in, in our bylaws, a large parking area shall be subdivided with a landscaping island, so no paved parking surface shall extend more than a hundred and twenty feet, so, I mean...
This is a hundred and twenty feet from here to here, it's probably farther from here to here is, again, that's a hundred and twenty, two parking bays, a hundred and twenty. So we do have an island, break it up into a hundred and twenty foot like location.
How many parking areas you need to make that project work on Amherst?
According to the Amherst in the Valley, two per dwelling unit, so that would be a hundred, uh, two hundred and fifty-two, that's a hundred and thirty-one. You proposed, and I apologize, I'm gonna stay personal, uh, from David Wilk.
You've never saw him before in our lives.
David Wilson, I apologize for just being, um, but, uh, so I, I, I work with David Wilk, and, um, and we can...
You're not one of those attorneys, are you?
I am.
Oh, great.
But I'm one of the good...
That blows my mind.
He's, he's replacement.
No, he's Tom Reedie's replacement.
You will, uh, like to become a senior lawyer later when I...
So how many parking spaces you have in Amherst, and how many parking spaces you have?
About half, about half, for the last count, um, I believe it was approximately a hundred and, a little less than a hundred and thirty, I think, in Hadley.
Yeah, yeah.
But there's a two hundred and...
Two hundred and seventy-three, seventy-three.
So what's about? A little less, a little less than, than half, in Hadley. A hundred, a hundred and thirty-five or so in Hadley, approximately.
A hundred and thirty-five? Your figure's a hundred and thirty, and it's a hundred and thirty-five, which one do you...
Well, it's difficult, because there is... Because there's some are, are like chopped up half with Hadley, half in Amherst, so with the official count.
So you call it half a parking lot there?
There's a, there's a line there, town line, you can't park one of them.
What, um, how big is your setback at that point?
From here?
From the structure to the town line?
Uh, I don't know if I had guessed, parking lot's eighteen, it's probably around fifteen. Just curious. Um, we, we did do, I'm, I'm hearing the unasked question, but, uh, we did do a bit of research, um, on that question with respect to split lot zoning, um, and we did not find anything that would indicate that the, uh, town line is equivalent to a property boundary for purposes of step back.
Well, no, because in Stop and, Big Y runs halfway split at Hadley and Amherst, there's a, there's a brass bar in the floor.
So what do, we go by boundary line, isn't it?
We go by the boundary line.
Their boundary line.
Right, their, their property line.
Because the town line could actually cut that building right in half, what do you do with that?
Oh, no, that would, that would be unbuildable, because they couldn't put that, they couldn't put the building in Hadley for this purpose.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
I just, I was just, it's hard to tell, it's, it's a, it's a reduced scale, so it's hard to tell exactly how much room there is there.
That's right, that's right, this, the building cannot be inhabited.
Jim, are we gonna go over the peer review, uh...
Yeah, we did have a peer review, um, we stepped through that if you'd like to, um, just to let, you know, one of the things that are happening, we are going back to the conservation commission, might relate everything to you. We went to conservation commission, and this line, weapon line, just to fill you in on what's happening, um, it was flagged in December of two thousand and sixteen, so a year and a half ago, and the conservation commission would like to relook at that line, just because it's flagged so long time ago. And the conservation commission would like to relook at that line just because it's flagged so long time ago. And our.
It was flagged when?
In December of two thousand and sixteen, a year and a half ago. Two thousand and fifteen, yeah. So, this, we're proposing to construct the parking lot at the Hadley's thirty-five foot no-bill line from a wetland perspective. And if that line moves, we're gonna have to slightly move this parking lot here, so we're waiting to hear from the commission about what's gonna happen there. And that's, uh, another aspect of that, the peer review letter will both be, uh, conservation commission as well as the planning board. One of the comments was on the drainage, we're not required by conservation to take test pits. Because we're not using these, these detention basins as infiltration basins, therefore you have to have a certain separation or quantify the soils to qualify what the recharge rate is. It's poor soils, but the review engineer suggested that we take test pits here to quantify exactly where groundwater was, and so we're proposing to do that, we have not done that yet. Those are two of the major things in the.
Uh, the invert, wasn't the invert, uh, uh, was too high? I mean, uh, the ex, the, the pipe exiting the site.
Where, in the water table, Joe?
Yes.
They, they wanted to confirm where the water table was.
Okay, so.
We have, we have approximated where it is, they would like to have test pits to get an actual.
Okay, so that's what it's about.
The test pit's gonna determine where that level is.
All right, so that's to be determined.
To be determined.
Okay.
Uh, I think everything else was pretty clear, the only, uh, things, we did do a complete traffic report for the town of, Ha- town of Amherst. We did not supply that to the reviewer for the town of Hadley, we can't supply that to you, obviously, and give it to him as well. And the other thing we have is the lighting, I don't, unfortunately, I don't have the lighting diagram here, but we do have proposed lighting here in the, uh, iso candles, show there is no spill.
Mark, that driveway is going actually through Amherst, not in Hadley, right?
That's correct, this heavy black line is, you know, the town line and the driveway is within the.
So why do we need a traffic thing if it's dumping air?
We, we have a traffic report which we can give you, I can tell you that as it analyzes the Route nine and intersections on Route nine.
Is this primarily proposed to be for students or is this for regular?
It's for regular, it's for family, it's, uh, it's, uh, different bedroom counts on there, it's not restricted to students, you don't have to be a student, anybody can live there.
Okay.
Uh, there will be a certain number of required, uh, affordable units, uh, because of the zoning in Amherst, I mean, it gets, gonna require that, so. Hadley not restricted to anyone.
While you mention that, this totally separate question irrelevant to the parking. How does Amherst address affordability on private development like this, do you know?
I'm gonna turn over to my lawyer.
Do you, do you know that question?
My understanding is that there is a, uh, twelve percent requirement, so twelve percent of the units should be marked as affordable for the Amherst Valley, and that is, uh, the affordability requirements are.
We, we understand all of that.
Yeah.
The question is who?
Designate.
Who, who, who implements the affordability, is it the developer or do they have, how do they do that?
So, I, I believe that the plan at this point is we've been in conversation with the Amherst Housing Authority, um, because the hope is that we can keep this local and make sure that the actual, you know, the affordable units are being marketed to local residents as opposed to just being on the state registry and, and anybody can apply. I mean, that's, to a certain extent, that has to be the case anyway, you mean.
Right. Keep us posted.
We will certainly keep both of it.
Yeah, we're just curious because we're running into that and, and with our town and our housing authority from.
And I, I think they, they go on, my understanding is that they go on that, you know, the state registry at that higher level, um, and then, you know, we hope to get some more confirmation from local authority that they can kind of insert some, some influence in the process.
Yeah, because our, our local housing authority is being directed by the state housing authority not to do it for local private developers. That they need to go to either a, uh, agency or something like that.
Yep.
And so we're wondering how other towns are handling it, just out of curiosity, cause we're, we're going to have some issues with that, and we wanna, we're, we're kind of polling, how are other towns doing it? So that we have some kind of a feeling of what we can do, that's all.
Is that project all funded by private funding or is there state and federal funding in it?
Uh, my understanding, it's totally private.
I, I speak to that, I said, uh, Tom Gaines with the, um, Florida, it's all private funded.
All private funded. So, being private funded, that could be restricted to Amherst, Amherst residents only? And not open it up to everybody in the state? Cause I understood if you had state or federal funding in it, then whatever you open for affordable housing opens it up to the whole state.
I, I think that if you're claiming and, and, I'm sorry, I, I don't wanna be espousing the, the legal, the legals that I'm not completely sure of, but, um, I think the way that it works is, um, the, in terms of the, you know, the affordability, the. When the state gets involved, it's when you're asking for sort of tax breaks, tax breaks or specific grants for the actual construction of the project, um, and I don't believe that that would be the case here. Um, however, the affordability requirement is not required, you know, in, in, sort of, effectively, that, that means that you have to comply with and, and put them effectively on that, you know, that state registry. Um, just as part of complying with the Amherst zoning bylaws for purposes of affordability.
God, surprises me in Amherst. If they want aliens to run for office, let everything else slide.
When you're, that's like, where are you in, the different buildings, construction.
The construction hopefully will start anywhere that you're.
So we've got month places now, yeah?
So there'd be, uh, right now the month.
Other comments from the board?
No, that's, I'm worried about that screening, if that's gonna be six foot, then that's what it's gonna be. It's not gonna be, cause other people said they're gonna put six foot, they put an eight inch tree, that's bull.
We'd be glad to add, as a condition of approval, that those screening shall be even on six foot line.
So.
And? What, six foot on center or what?
Well, I would let that spacing be dictated by landscape architecture, relatively appropriate spacing.
Well, before you get your permit, let us know.
We'll do that.
So you, you don't have a lighting plan with you and you don't have a planting plan?
We do have a planting plan, it's actually in the package.
Okay.
In this package?
Yes. I have a plan on the schedule, this actually has a schedule here, but, uh, it doesn't have the designation for that particular.
No, one-on-one.
Can we do have a, 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 a mark on the shirt?
Yeah, you do, like, they just, we didn't have a copy of it.
So, here's a question I don't have an answer to, and it's not entirely a zoning question, but how are we going to figure out auto excise tax?
I just was asking that question to John.
So, I, I don't know off the top of my head, I can tell you a little bit more in terms of this is, this, the plan for this project is for it to essentially be commercial parking. And somehow or other, there's going to be, um, a leasing situation, uh, between the entity that controls the parking and the entity that controls the residential, the actual residential part of it. Um, so, there will be a monetary value associated with the leasing of that actual land. Um, so, I mean, I believe currently it's, it's being taxed at approximately.
No, no, I'm actually thinking of the auto excise.
I, I, I honestly.
Based on, so, but that's interesting, so there's gonna be a separate leasing entity?
Correct.
Are there gonna be assigned spaces?
Ninety-three of them.
I'm, I'm not sure.
They look like they're staggered.
Probably not.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure if we've gotten that far into.
But the Amherst or Hadley address?
Well, the, the, the person will have an Amherst address, but the vehicles will be garaged in Hadley.
Kinda like John Kerry's problem with his boat.
Well, yeah.
Same thing.
Same thing, so, um, that's.
They're not even Amherbating.
That would be something.
That's definitely something we will look ahead and.
DS.
Yeah, that, that, that needs a little more exploration, I think, because I, and we'll certainly talk with our tax collector assessors about how.
What are those?
Red dogwood, dwarf dogwood.
What the hell is a red dogwood?
Dwarf red dogwood.
What is it?
Dogwood tree is smaller than color red.
It's color red, that's.
Is it green?
Pardon? I'm sure it's green, it just probably changes red.
No, is it green all year round?
Dogwood?
Uh, within, what?
These are, those are dogwood trees that are proposed to be there, not amber lady.
No, we would like to change that to an, uh, never been sourced.
Five gallon size, so they're small.
Five gallon size?
Five gallon size, they're not, guaranteed they're not eight foot, not at the five gallon, you're not gonna fit an eight foot tree in a five gallon pail.
And put some muck inside.
No.
Those, those trees in the back here.
PA.
All the three, three inch caliber, those ain't aprovites, those are shade.
You're proposing three inch trees?
I've known this story.
If you're propos, I'm, I'm giving you a warning, if you're.
I told my staff this.
Okay, Pete knows this.
I know this.
Cause this is, you go, he went through this before, they proposed three and four inch caliper trees. I says, really, you know how big a four inch, three and four inch caliper tree is, how tall that is? You're proposing three inch caliper trees here, I don't care, you propose what you want, but if you're proposing three inch, you will put in three inch. Okay?
You won't be laughing after you get done with all of it.
Yeah, because Pete, Pete, Pete came, Pete, Pete came back to us after I made a big deal about that at one of the other developers. And they reduced it by over half. Because a, typically a three or four inch caliper tree, that means roughly, depending, but a general rule of thumb is three feet above, three to four feet above the ground. The tree measures three to four inches in diameter. That means that three or four inch diameter tree is probably twenty feet to thirty feet tall. That's a mighty big tree to try to transplant and get to grow.
So would that satisfy the board though?
You, you can, whatever you say, whatever you propose, we will accept, within reason.
All I can tell you, don't do it, man.
Yeah, no, you don't.
We're gonna have to send a life plan based on conservation.
Right. Yeah.
I, I used to go to Christmas trees.
And the lighting, you got the lighting plan there?
A tree that wide is probably seven feet, eight feet.
Oh, okay, you know, the shoebox.
Not a, not a, uh.
Oh, dogwood?
Not a tulip tree.
Okay.
Not a sea, not a pine, not a London plane tree, okay, the, these aren't evergreen trees, these are like a maple tree and that kind of stuff.
Are these, all these trees are local?
Yep, little different than the shoebox, but.
Another thing, are all the trees, um, local, local trees by native, native to the area?
I believe so, I believe that would be intended to have.
Wait a minute, that's, that's lawyer talk, I believe so.
And that's, yeah, I, I, you know, as an attorney, uh, did not have, uh, a lot of input on the plans that were used, although, uh, I do believe, I, I recall reference of the Amherst planning board in formal meeting where that was discussed and represented.
In, in Amherst, maybe.
Then the interest, yes, yeah, interest, yes, they will, they will treat market firms and, and they market.
Okay.
Correct, yes, correct?
Yeah, absolutely, and, and we're following the, Amherst has a, uh, a book.
I, 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 I would, I would question some of these, you know, um, Japanese stewartia, London plane, Pinoki falls, cypress, um, Korean feather, red, well, that's, that's probably grass. Sunset bamboo.
Do you know anything about these?
So, anyway.
Saying up.
And just, just a, this, I just wanna have you to the airport or in for some of the board, um, I mean, I think these comments do, do indicate that at least those trees along that buffer on Route nine, the board's looking for something evergreen.
Yes, yes.
And the minimum size, like, of twenty-four feet.
Yeah, I don't want this to get bogged, I don't want this to get bogged down in detail, I mean, basically, you're not hearing any, any significant objections to the concept, this is just.
Deep, very, they're very fine detail, they are.
And frankly, we are still waiting to be back when, uh, whole county competition's involved, and the competition, you know, this one, we are still taking that feedback and, and.
Well, I'm still not totally thrilled about the fact we're gonna have a sea of blacktop without any landscaping, but, uh, to be, to be.
If they plant the trees out of sight, out of mind, you know, who, who is it gonna bother, you gonna go over by a helicopter and look at it? I don't care. You know, if, if you can't see it from the road, and the greenery's nice in the background, then ain't bothering me one bit. I could see it if it's just out in the open, like, you know, stop and chop and all that, right?
Is the eighteenth okay for you on that one too, of July?
When are you going to conservation?
Uh, so how?
Where is June thirteen?
Yeah, the Amherst is fourteen.
July thirteen.
Did you go over everything on this list?
Uh, did you go in detail, if we can, if we want stuff to do it, to make sure.
I wanna hear your side, sorry, I hear him complaining about you, I wanna hear your side.
Now, we want, we can read it out loud and go quickly.
Go ahead, take your time, hurry up.
One of the first comments is, site plan should be on standard point five thirty-six inch at scale one to the twenty, our plans are one inch to the forty, the review engineer felt that that scale was appropriate.
Agreed.
For, for, when we get to the actual point of a decision, have a list of waivers.
Okay. Uh, name of project locust date and scale plan, plans are not included in locust, uh, I think the company, we will include that on, set of plan to make it appropriate. Um, name and address of the owner of record, developer and sealed engineer, landscape architect, or architect, um, plan received for review, that lists the owner of record. We can add the owner of record on the plan, I believe it was on the existing condition plan, but it wasn't every plan. Location and boundary to lots, adjacent ways and locations of owners' names and all the adjacent properties and built with a three hundred feet and all zoning district boundaries, um, we may not have a complete list, uh, abutters listed on the plan to bend to three hundred feet. We could add that, uh, and pay nine five eleven or ask for a waiver.
You don't have to put all the owners of the abutters on, that, that would get, some plan that gets awfully messy. As long as we have the, the abutters plan, that was fine, the abutters list that you already supplied.
Is there a name of a contact person on this entire site? Or, or any questions that make them up?
I would be me until we, probably.
That would be you, well, you're doing a poor job with all this list, so, who else has done that list? There's too many questions about the job you did.
Well, I guess there, me, it's, uh, semantics, uh.
That's, these, these are normal.
Your normal.
They're not big deals, we have these normal follow, because a very few plans come in at a scale of one to thirty-six. Most of them are at a different scale because it fits better, otherwise it gets too cumbersome.
So, so you're saying you can answer any questions to deal with that project?
Yes.
For the owners?
Correct.
Good.
As, as related to the site plan, yes.
Okay.
Uh, we talked about the, uh, daily hours of traffic, we have the traffic report. Traffic in, in fact statement, that's also included in the traffic report, which is glad to supply to the town.
I think we've, this, we've determined that we don't need one, so, put that on your waiver list.
Um, the erosion center control was somewhere management, we had a TBL plan which has, uh, a location for the owner, for the name of the owner who's gonna be responsible for erosion control, so that was one line left out of this book about who the owner was. Again, the locust map does not only erosion control center plan, we had a more locust plan on the plan. And we talked about before the estimate seasonal high groundwater, a test pit needs to be conducted in order to determine that seasonal high groundwater. And that, that's not a requirement, that's a suggestion by the, uh, review engineer, we're glad we're talking.
I get a question, are you gonna produce, when you, everything's done and said, are you gonna produce any more runoff into that wetlands that is currently dispensed into it?
Uh, we, I thought we will balance the pre-impulse peak flow rates, the quantity of water will increase, that's normal development, there, that's, that's the nature of the.
But what are you gonna do about it, cause now you worry about downstream, uh, downstream flooding, and what would you?
We are the, uh, these large detention areas that we have, underground detention systems.
That's gonna be on the Amherst side?
Well, it'll be on, on the Amherst side, it's, it'll be on the Hadley side. Those systems are, we have calculated those as if they are not recharging the ground, but they are, of course, they have open bottoms, and we know that they will recharge. So that actually our calculations are better than what, I mean, the, the calculations are showing less than what that's gonna happen. So the real world's gonna be better than our calculations because we're ignoring the infiltration calculation, so we're encouraging as much water to recharge our independent pavement as, as could possibly go there. So the real world's gonna be better than our calculations, cause we're ignoring infiltration calculations, so we're encouraging as much water to recharge our independent as could possibly go there, based upon those poor soils.
Have you mentioned that the water's gonna end up in Lake Warner?
Yes.
There's a save Lake Warner committee that's in Hadley right now.
Lake Warner, that's a pot.
You wanna talk to them and see whether or not developers might wanna get involved with that financially?
We're going to the conservation commission, which is highly scrutinizing our drainage calculations, it also gets reviewed by a master D E P, for application goes to them as well.
What's the soil in that footprint, what, what kind of soil, is there clay underneath there, is there gravel there, what is it?
It's glacial till.
It's what?
Glacial till, so it's a real heavy soil with, um, high groundwater.
So it's not drainable?
It doesn't drink very well, so most of the water that lands on there drains off already, cause it has a very poor runoff, it's what they call C D soils from a, um, high going curve.
Does that, does that water over there run across where the Marriott is into that swamp? Is that where that water ends?
I'm not sure where it goes here, but I truly concentrated on what's leaving our site to make sure the pre-impulse matched.
Yeah, well, I hope it don't flood anybody downstream. By a canoe, in case of emergency.
Yeah, we follow all the standard engineering, environmental engineering, but permitting requirements, the D E P has very stringent requirements on how the stormwater is supposed to be managed to design.
What, then, what good, if that soil underneath is, doesn't leach water through it, then what good is that underground storage? What's it, it fills up and that's what it's fault?
It slows it down, again, when you pave water, pavement area, the water leaves at a much faster rate, pull up more easily, so essentially, you hold it in almost like a bathtub with a small drain.
But you get a trench or rain, it'll fill it all up. Then, then what happens?
Well, it has a small outlet on it, so it's gonna drain slowly between storms, so a lot of water comes in, it fills up, and we have a small outlet there, which lets the water release at a very slow rate.
What are those designed for, a five hundred year flood, or what is that?
Hundred year storm.
Hundred year storm.
So if, if it overwhelms the drainage system, it's gonna just flood the parking lot. We don't care about that, it's private property.
No, it won't flood the parking, it'll run down, that's all taper down to the west, right? That whole parking lot.
But this is an example, John, drainage is always a concern, whether it's housing development, commercial development, and we don't have the ability to distinguish is it gonna work, is it not gonna work. So we have a reputable engineer, plus we have a peer review engineer to make sure that we kind of cover those bases on the drainage and make sure it won't flood people downstream, and to make sure that there is adequate some-
Well, I am asking this, Joe, because as everything's developed and developing, all that water is going down somewhere, the same path, you know, downstream, whoever's downstream gets the brunt of it, it's not the guy that's upstream, it's downstream. So that's basically what I'm, I'm concerned with.
Long Island Sound.
Yeah.
Just, you mentioned the hundred year flood, uh, what's the elevation on Route nine, right across from Applebee's? Would you have a guess? Somebody said in nineteen thirty eight that the Mount Warner backed up across Route nine, just curiosity. Pardon?
Me and Chili's.
Applebee's, a little further down where Route nine just-
Applebee's by Howard Johnson.
Yeah, there was actually a U S G S benchmark on that bridge crossing right there.
Okay, so, would it look there?
But there is a, again, U S G S benchmark there.
Where was it? Where's the benchmark?
There's a culvert.
The culvert.
Culvert there.
Between the Marriott and Applebee's.
Oh, 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 okay, okay, so there's a U S, right on that, there's a bronze, this right there, I never knew that.
You probably can look it on a U S G S map, that'll have a hex there, where that bridge is at, and I'll give you the exact elevation of what that bridge is.
I never knew there was one there. Okay.
Thank you for the point of information.
Anything else? Okay?
Just, uh, between now and then, we will supply you with it, you don't want the traffic report?
We don't need the traffic report.
And we will provide you with a leg diagram, and we will address the, uh, the set associates.
You have, you have any idea, like, how many lights are gonna be there, no?
They'll have that, they'll have that.
They have a-
We have a planning on his light-
Did you see the light? The light fixture that it's showing? I passed it down. It's not a shoebox, Jim, but it does-
Yeah, it's, it's an LED down.
Close to it, yeah.
It's the equivalent of a, of a shoebox, it's a little bit different shape. Yeah, that's the little-
There's no spillover with those lights?
Correct, they are very, very focused, and each one, each one of those individual lights are actually being focused individually, rather than just happening.
What's the wattage on that? Just for the heck of it, do you know?
I don't, I think the second and third page tells you what the wattage is.
Hi?
I believe we're requesting a twenty foot high pole, I know it's entered in-
Eighteen watts, or a number of LEDs.
But same thing, we can, we can put twelve- We'll put twice as many if we do that, so just.
Forty one watts. Forty one.
Forty one watts for a single brick, my gosh. Compared to the old-
Two hundred watt, five hundred watt sodium sand.
Yeah.
And then the better lights.
It's brighter and everything else.
Yeah, you put the poles in the waiver.
Yeah.
And we'd wanna be sure that you will not see the, well, the glare or the bulbs.
Okay?
I'd just like to say, I thought you did a good job in this presentation, and as, as Bill said, these things are not abnormal in the, in the letter, so I'm sure, I'm sure John didn't mean any just-
Sure I did, what the hell you mean? I meant every word I said, I've seen ten pages many times. Right, right, Mark?
Yes.
Don't let the door slap you. Okay.
Okay. That's going to be a medical marijuana facility.
Really?
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 That was approved about a little year ago?
It's the name of it's Happy Valley, so everybody in the valley-
Happy Valley Compassion Center.
Yeah, keep the party going, right?
Yes. Yeah, it was medical marijuana.
What, three or four in Amherst? You guys are gonna be a lot happier there.
Yeah, it's, uh, yeah, it's, it's only, it's only a for sale facility, they're not gonna be growing anything there. And, uh-
Everybody's gonna grow in the backyard.
They're, they're moving forward with it. Well, the, the medical marijuana was approved, what, three years ago?
Then you got regular marijuana.
And, uh, regular marijuana was approved last year, but they have still, they're still, the state is still putting together the regulations on how to sell it and-
Tax it.
Tax it.
Um, but you, so, so you can own it, but you gotta go to the black market to buy it.
And you can grow so much.
Gotta love Massachusetts.
But you can go on the also the Amherst common and smoke pot, you're no problem. Cops make sure you don't get in trouble.
I guess there would be a lot of people needing medical attention.
Exactly.
Well, we'll, wait and see.
You get some kind of retention.
We, we, we're only zoning here.
I was told the guy on Market Street in Northampton is doing two million a month in medical marijuana.
They're running out of products.
Yeah, two million a month.
What is that? Uh, they have a, they have a treatment act that, like, Collins Street out, but they have a sudden Brookline as well.
He's growing squash. Uh, yeah, they're, they're growing it in, um, a lot of it is being done in, uh, either Butler Building type plants or converted mills.
Yeah, most of that, that's probably the only place you can grow it, is in a, is in a closed building, it's not being grown in the open fields.
I told a select one to bite a Montgomery rose, imagine the pot you could raise in that place.
Anyway.
Nobody would have to pay tax in the town, exactly.
Okay, continue to the eighteenth.
Yes. Okay. Anything else?
Uh, let's see what's left on the agenda.
We don't have any minutes to approve.
Um, I think we have to, do we have to vote to approve the reserve fund?
We did, we voted last time to review, we voted last month to do it, I signed it.
Okay.
Um, I signed the, uh, the, the, the-
Reserve, the transfer form?
Transfer, yeah.
Okay. Uh, so then the discussion topics, um, oh, a couple of things, um, I got a call from a, an insurance agent, um, there's a, well, it's Gossberry, but it's actually Gooseberry. Uh, Gooseberry Lane, uh, at the very end, uh, the developer apparently got a charity bond.
Okay.
And he has asked to have that released, and since the road has been accepted by the town, we have no basis for keeping it, so-
Okay, oh. Okay, that, that, that one.
Who's that, Berkham's?
Yeah.
Okay, Gooseberry, right.
That, the one, that's the one the town accepted at the last town meeting?
Correct.
Yeah.
So I will make a motion to release the charity bond.
For Gooseberry.
Bond on Gooseberry.
Second. Motion second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, and then, um, John wanted us to discuss and or vote on, uh, whether it will require peer approval for upcoming town projects. Well, you just asked for the fire substation, but I think it applies to the others as well.
Well, not really, because Mark Donald was, uh, they're the one that designing the drainage system and everything else, and they're on our peer, peer review, but, um, you don't know another engineering firm that comes from either Springfield or somewhere, what kind of work they do, they have no record with us. So I certainly wouldn't want-
A blanket exemption?
To ask, to exempt them. If they have history with us, they have history with the town, and, you know, I, it, what I, what I got out of them, that it could cost them to five thousand dollars more in our budget to, to pay for peer review.
Yeah, I'm, I wouldn't, it sounds like a good idea, but I wouldn't give it a blanket exemption, sometimes the drainage is a tricky problem.
Not under M S-
You don't want to exempt drainage.
No, not under M S four now, the whole thing has changed, nothing can go offsite. That's, that has changed with the M S four drainage. And I just-
Well, so you're, you're saying-
It's a case by case, this has nothing to do with a blanket overall rubber stamp, everything that comes into Hadley, because again, if engineer has no history or what, and anybody could hire any kind of engineer, they could do basically anything they want, and I wouldn't feel comfortable without a peer review.
So I'll make a motion to waive peer review for the North Hadley Fire Substation on the basis that the town work is being done by Berkshire Design.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
I should maybe, no, I should maybe abstain on that, because I don't-
Four zero, four zero one.
Yeah.
One abstention. Okay.
Okay. Uh, so no minutes, no bills, no correspondence, so we talked about a few of those things.
Right.
I don't know, that viewscape protections, I just had that on there because that is an issue that has come up with the EverSource project, but, um, I think it's really a bigger issue that we can discuss. Um, we do have it in the master plan update.
I, I was gonna say, that's, that sounded like something we could use Larry on.
Okay.
I just thought, I thought of something else on this peer review thing. Because now it's in front of the select one, and they wanna move a site, that's probably a better perk site, but if something happens that they change engineers for, uh, for any reason, I would not want-
Well, he's got a specifically-
I have on the basis-
Specifically mentioning, because we're using Berkshire Design, it's waived, yeah.
So it just-
Right.
We don't get buffaloed.
Yep, yep, yep.
Okay, so defer viewscape protections to P V P C. And I think that is everything that I have.
I get a question. When, when this board releases bonds, uh, for a developer that's doing a subdivision or whatever, does that release ever happen before a town meeting acceptance?
Subdivisions used to be, used to be, because, because if a developer put in the road according to our specifications, we had no reason-
But-
To, to withhold that last lot or that bond.
The point is, they, they do it at that time, but it's their responsibility to take it to a town meeting.
Now we have it at that way.
Under the new subdivision regs, that's all been addressed.
That's all taken care of.
And, and to release it, like, I certainly don't wanna see a developer come back and say, under their, under their project, there's something wrong with the road, and the taxpayers gotta pay for it. The hell with that, they gotta pay for that.
That's right, that's been addressed under the new subdivision regs.
Johnny-
Under the old plan, we were, we got stuck a couple of times.
So the, the state law says we can take a performance bond to secure the due completion of the improvements.
Entire site.
Entire site, but it also, it just says, once it is done, the developer's entitled to the money back.
But what encourages him to take it to town meeting?
Right.
And not make a Holly Road deal?
Nothing, under the, the state law doesn't talk about that, and most of the time, the developer is only too happy to give the, that road to the town. But because we had a few problems, we changed the subdivision regulations for going forward, so, uh, we, the one that's coming up for preliminary review in a month is the first one that's been filed under the new-
Subdivision.
New regulations. Actually, maybe Quinlan's was, no, we hadn't adopted it quite yet, so the new regulations say that as part of the application, not as part of cleaning up afterwards, but as part of getting a hearing scheduled, the developer has to either give us a deed in advance, or say that the road will never be presented to the town.
And he will maintain it.
And he will maintain it.
Yeah.
So that, we won't schedule a hearing, because that's part of, that's now part of the checklist of what is a complete application.
Right. We can't fall into another Holly Road deal.
I am, this, this has to go with the EverSource thing, last week, I, I called the resources office up and asked for the chief executive officer's office, and I never got through to him, but I wanted to invite him to, uh, the next meeting, July eighteenth, and, and like him, him to talk as to why this particular site on Moody Bridge Road is critical for EverSource's green energy, sustainability, electricity. And I was wondering if we might send a letter, just telling him to come and, tell us what the corporate strategy is, and why this site is crucial to their, to their, uh, development of green energy. Will anybody object to that?
He certainly would second that motion.
I don't see that that's part of a zoning decision.
Well, we're, we're elected politically, and this is a political decision.
We are elected to administer chapter forty A.
And we wanna make sure that we, we're making sure that, see, my point is that, I think that this site that they've chosen could never meet site plan approval, because it's an inappropriate site for a solar field. And my question, I guess, is because we have a mechanism within the law, within, within the zoning bylaw, to achieve site plan approval, does that mean every site will achieve site plan approval? Because some of those qualifications within that bylaw are subjective, i.e. properly screened, is a subjective, subjective, very subjective.
That's where we get elected to.
So what's the harm of Mike's idea, he wants to talk to somebody at the meeting?
Let's see if he wants to come. What's the harm in that? Send him a letter.
The harm is, it's taking us out of our, taking us away from our job, which is to review the-
Collecting information.
We have an application in front of us, we, we are not a grand jury doing an inquisition here, we have an application in front of us, we can either approve the application or deny the application.
Based on zoning.
Based on zoning, based on what they present. Um, I don't think that we really need to have-
Well, are, are any planning boards in the state a minor political force, or not?
I thought the state is in process of changing, changing the laws on this, and I just heard the other day, some of these solar arrays are never hooked up for the grid, it's just the deductions they get in the tax credit- It's just the deductions they get in the tax credits and all this other stuff. This is what I heard the other day. I don't know how true that is.
I have no idea how that could be. Because it's gotta be hooked to the grid to get the credits.
I just don't think we should shy from being a minor political force if.
I don't think that.
The law says we can't do that. And all we're doing is trying to get some public information out to the public.
Whether, how it fits into their business plan, in my opinion, has nothing to do with zoning.
Well, they've, they've told us that they're trying to negotiate with, uh.
Kestrel Trust.
Right, Kestrel Trust to get another piece of property. So, that's public information. They've talked about it right here.
That's public.
So, why can't we get him and talk about that a little further? Who's conducting those negotiations?
You know, they, they.
That is beyond the scope of a special permit public hearing.
I agree with that.
You, you can vote for or against the project on the basis of anything you want, but we can't create a kangaroo, kangaroo court here uh, just because we have their attention for a permit.
I've been to a court before. This wouldn't be a kangaroo court.
Well, but, but we need to base, we need to base our decision on zoning.
I understand. I, I was just, I was just asking a question.
Yeah, okay.
Because I, I'm, I think we could be a political force if we picked the right spot to do it. And we certainly kind of did it with, uh, Five Colleges, Inc.
I do not wish to be, I do not wish to turn this board into a political force.
As long as we get the proper motion made.
Well, you don't want your protest or anything like that?
We could become a force.
I, if we're protested, I wanna be protested, and we've been protested plenty on our zoning issues.
You have?
Oh, yeah. When Walmart came in, we had massive protesting.
Oh, you mean out in the street against the planning board?
Well, at least in the caf, the full cafeteria.
Full cafeteria, in the press, in the street, yes.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, we had, we had our share of issues. We had our share of protesting when Walmart was coming in.
You want everything nice and quiet, no?
When the very first.
You want to retire to a quiet, it's quiet zone.
Whatever comes up, I will deal with on a zoning, on a zoning face.
Well, it looks like.
Anything else?
I lost, but I, I thought.
Will we adjourn?
As I have.
My question was, are there, are there any planning boards that are a little more politically aggressive in the state? We, we would know that than we are.
You'd have to ask Larry. I don't know.
I don't know. I don't know. I, I, there may be. I, I, good question. I don't know. Larry might, that's a good, that would be one for Larry. So, as I've said a couple of times, Mike, um, to people who have made comments from the audience, um, it's a fair comment.
Yeah.
But it's a comment for town meeting, not for a public hearing.
I understand. But I still would like to hear what he has to say in a public hearing. He runs the company.
Yep. Suggest the D P you bring him in.
There's a motion to adjourn. To a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is history. Thank you, and thank you, John.
John. Have, have a good Fourth of July, everybody.
All right.